Okay, it is Tuesday, May 1st, 2018, 6 o'clock. Call the meeting of the Board of Licker Commissioners. We have three applications. We have the Petrogas Group, New England Inc., DBA Petrogas Group, New England, second class license. Golden Fortune, Port, DBA New Joywa Chinese Restaurant, first class. Kendall's Kitchen, DBA Kendall's Kitchen, first class.
I'll move that we approve all three applications.
Seconded.
Any discussion? Any concerns about any of them?
Anybody have any concerns about any of these?
All right. No? All in favor? All in favor? Call the meeting of the Rockingham Select Board. We're going to a meeting to order. Are there any additions to the agenda for routine administrative management?
Not that I have.
Okay. Approvements of April 17th, 2018.
Make the motion, we approve the minutes of April 17th. Seconded.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Public comment? Items not on the agenda? Okay. Shane?
Okay. They arranged for Jones Roofing to view the clock tower roof, and they did go up there to address the leaking that we were having during storms. And all it really needed, it turned out, that we needed to tighten the weather vane connections way up there. So they got up there, tightened them all, and we should be good to go. According to them, the materials, having been used in the past, to secure that are really in pretty good shape, just got loose just from the wind and what have you. So that's a good thing. This Saturday is Greenup Day, and I know that one of the things we've been talking, Mike and I, about is tires. A lot more tires end up in our --
It's a real big problem.
Yeah, in our truck than we know that there are on the road sides. So we're not going to be collecting tires here, just to see what it's like, because we ended up with 300 last year, 800 --
300 last year, 800 something the year before.
Yeah.
A lot of money.
Mike's out and around on these roads, and we know that there are not that many tires on the side of the road. So someone's dumping tires, and we're paying for it. Taxpayers are paying for it. It's a problem. Other than that, vehicles, we're going to be in Saxon's River and at the 103 shed.
One in the shed, one in the fire department, Saxon's River, and one in Bellas Falls. Trash only. We haven't got much physical scrap metal taken off there. We don't get much scrap metal.
Anyway, that's this Saturday. Also, Household Hazardous Waste Collections will be May 12th at the Springfield Transfer Station, and then May 19th in Weathersfield at the transfer station there. Backyard composting workshop, there's one at the library, June 21st. Just want to mention, last week, we sent out and advertised the invitation to bid for the additional paving work that was approved at the last meeting. Everett Hammond put together a real nice bid package for us, and so we sent that out for both the chip ceiling and the paving. So those are out. They'll be returned, they're due on May 10th, and the idea being that at the May 15th meeting, the board would be able to approve them, award the contract, excuse me. Great news, we received word today that we successfully received the Structures Grant for Cherry Hill. $175,000.
Really? Finally?
Finally got it, yeah. We were expecting that we weren't going to get it.
Yeah.
And almost didn't even put in the application. And then last week, we put one together and submitted it, and we heard this morning, $175,000.
Wow, cool.
Which is just super, some of the towns just didn't submit, or wanted to do it next year. So that's a big boost, and you know, one of the things we may want to think about is, you know, we did some sidewalk paving last year up in front of the new park up on Cherry Hill, is to when this project gets done, which we can't start anything until July 1st. In other words, we haven't even designed it yet. So it needs to get designed, hopefully get it out to bid next January for the following construction season. But may want to think about sidewalk connecting, you know, this work at Cherry Hill up to finish off what we did last year, to really to complete that whole sidewalk alignment there for the kids. Anyway, really great news. Mike, thanks for all the work you did on that. Total project cost, we estimate roughly $233,000. That includes, I think we had scheduled roughly in-kind work of $8,000 in there. So that's good news. Vermont Local Roads Training, they're actually having a training at the fire station this Thursday, if anyone wants to learn about road construction and what have you. If anybody's interested, let me know, or I can send out.
Is that the one they're going to discuss? The, I know at BLCT, when we were up there, they mentioned they were supposed to have a meeting down here about falls, about the fees and all that stuff.
The what?
The fees?
Yes, some of that, some of that 64 permitting.
Sort of what they call the roundtable thing?
Yeah, it's a road foreman's roundtable.
Yeah. I'll pass this around if anybody's interested.
There's openings. I mean, if it's, I guess, you know.
No, Susan?
I signed up. I signed up for it. I'm going to be running late into it, but.
Yeah. What else? Lastly, on the Public Works Director, we'll be beginning advertising this week and putting finishing touches on a job description.
How many have signed up for that now? If it's three, we shouldn't have three there.
Just Susan.
Oh, okay. Someone else from the board has.
I think you could have three there, Peter, as long as probably didn't sit together and discuss the same as going for BLCT.
There, in a training session, is no issue here. I mentioned, Public Works Director will be beginning advertising that this week. Actually doing interviews for the maintenance position this week, and so we're moving forward on those. That's all I have.
All right. Any questions for Shane?
Yeah, 175, that's huge.
That is huge.
Really is. It's a great thing.
Finally get that project going.
I'm just surprised.
All right, thank you. So, first thing on the agenda is to ratify vote taken 417, 2018, regarding USDA grant for town hall elevator. Shane and I signed the paperwork on that, so we're good to go.
Madam Chairman, I move that we ratify the vote taken 417 in regards to the USDA grant for town hall elevator.
Seconded.
Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All right. Zoning office, Chuck. Adopt Rockingham, there's no Chuck. Rockingham zoning bylaws. I guess we don't need Chuck for that. He sent in a memo that the Select Board held two publicly noted hearings at their regular meetings held on March 20th and April 17th, 2018. After the April 17th, 2018 hearing was closed, and upon receiving no comment from the public, the Select Board moved to adopt the zoning bylaws at their next regular scheduled meeting on May 1st, 2018. As a reminder, Peter Golick found the document reference errors in section 4700, which have been corrected. Inspired by Peter, we made an additional attempt to find other reference errors, but without success. Digital copy of the Rockingham zoning bylaws is available on the website. I'm not reading that web address. Print copies of the bylaws are available upon request. Suggested motion, I move we adopt the Rockingham zoning bylaws as presented.
Madam Chairwoman, I move the Rockingham Select Board adopt the Rockingham zoning bylaws as presented.
Seconded.
Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Recycling Center.
Gary was, had a family matter come up, so he could not be here this evening. But the, Peter put together a draft of a recycling center access policy, not done yet, but it's pretty darn close, and we just wanted to bring it back to the board to take a look at. If you wanted, the board could approve it as it is, and you know, you could just log it in that way, unless you had any other changes, Peter, or you're okay with it?
No, the changes were made and additions, they're fine.
Yeah, I met with Gary the other day, and he suggested a couple of changes that are shown here.
I saw those. The only thing that we had talked about was second homeowners. They're technically not a resident, but in a way they are. I mean, they may only be here for two or three months, but then we may be getting into a field we may not want to venture into, such as landlords then can say, well, I'm a resident, I pay taxes. So maybe we ought to just leave it out as the wording as you suggested, Shane, just leave it as residents.
Well, the certification for the facility does say residents of Rockingham and Westminster.
Yeah.
Doesn't say anyone else, but it is a tough one. There's people who pay taxes.
Yeah.
But maybe they could pay $25.
I suppose. More money in our pocket.
The policy decision. Leave it to you guys.
Yeah.
I think we leave it out right now.
Yeah.
And we can just leave it as residents.
So can we move to adopt this now, then?
Could.
Do you want to wait?
Wanted, or?
It can always be changed, and this way, you know, it gives people an idea of, I mean, I have, you and I went over a couple of things that I thought maybe could be moved to a different part of it, but in general, it seems to be okay the way it is.
I thought it looked good. So I'll move that.
Yes, the Select Board instead of selectmen.
Oh, yeah.
And? I didn't even see that.
Board of, yeah.
Oh, I see, yep. Yep, we change that.
Board of Rockingham Select Board.
Okay, I'll move that we accept the Town of Rockingham Recycling Center access policy with the changes to date.
Accept and approve?
Accept and approve.
Seconded.
So you move that way, accept and approve, okay.
Shane, what's your thoughts on, Gary mentioned this to me before we take a vote here, about handing this policy out when they get their stickers, so everybody knows what's up, not going to come as a shock to them, type of thing. I'm sure he's going to have them down there posted, and you know, at the recycling center.
That's a great idea.
It may be a handy idea to hand out, and they get their sticker, just say, well, here's the policy.
And then they put it in the recycling bin.
Right.
Well, that's okay. It works, right?
They just thought Gary, Gary thought about it.
Yeah, he might want to.
I don't know, I says that maybe.
We could probably put the whole thing onto one page. You could squeeze it so it's easier for people to have, you know, they could put it in dashboards.
Front and back, yeah. All right, are there any other additions or changes? Most of the people are okay? Ready for the vote? All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Thank you for the hard work on that. So when, but when will, July 1st is the?
Yeah, it says access will be, it's due, excuse me, it's July 1st.
But when will people be able to first start getting their stickers?
I know that Gary had a sit-down with Kathleen, and they were working some things out on how best to get it done. I didn't really talk to him about it after that, but it's, we're looking to roll it out, and we would need to, they're working on how best to do it, so I can't give you an answer.
We should have a better sense of that in the next meeting.
Yep.
Now, the other thing too, I thought I'd, Shane, is that the application form is from another town, we might want to change that.
Oh, that's already in the works.
Okay. Yeah, I brought that up. I assumed it was, but.
Yeah, yeah.
Because we kind of have to fill out the wrong.
I'm sure it's happened before.
Minor details.
Highway Department, review downtown sidewalk engineering plan. All right. Welcome back.
There's a full, there's some full-size copies there. It'd be easier to look at. So if I could orientate you to the drawings, just the text that's really, that is a little bit too small to read, that's text, the grading text that the contractor will use to establish the elevations. So what you should, what you should notice is just a few colors that jump out at you. The points that are red, they're little marked red, those are where we're going to change the elevation of the curb or the sidewalk. And then the curb itself, I've colored in green, curb, for example, is where there isn't curb, or the curb is destroyed and we need to replace it. So you see along the edge of the road, you'll see green curb. Or you'll see orange curb, and the orange curb is where there already is curb, but we're going to adjust it, move it up or down. Usually up, but not always. And then you'll see some darker blue areas, those are the new curb ramps, or adjusted curb ramps. Part of, one of the main benefits of doing the sidewalk over now is that we can address several locations where you can't, wheelchairs can't get onto that curb. There, we had several catch basins that we wanted to install, those are in purple. You see, there's a couple along the east side of the road, and then there's one in the little park on the west side of the road, right at the corner there. And if you look at, if you look at page one, on the left, on the left-hand side, that's sort of just a simple color coding to show you what we might talk about, but if you look, some of the, we talked before about moving the parking area around, and perhaps realigning the curb to the east side of that. And so there's a schematic view of what that would look like, just overlaid on the existing parking lot. And then on page two, I show you that in a little bit more detail. But in the first page, you'll see those things that are in light blue are just concepts for what we could do. And one thing that, if you look at that, that you'll notice is, right now, as you come down the concrete stairway, there's a crosswalk, sort of just painted in the, painted on the ground there. And if we do change the sidewalk, then what we can do is, we can move that crossing to align with where the sidewalk is going to come. It's basically going to aim right at it. And so if you choose to realign the sidewalk, it's going to have some benefits for the pedestrians moving around out there, and also it'll help us with some of the drainage issues. Right now, the ground is really flat, and the curb is very close to the pavement when you go up those steps, so that it's hard, the pavement falls apart pretty quickly in that area. So if we can move that sidewalk, we sort of have a ready place to put it in line, which we can do, we can do that anyway. We don't have to change the sidewalk to do that, but it just became apparent that that would be a good way to handle the crossings. And then when you get up to the corner there, you'll see the existing crossing, if you, 4 plus 50, station, 4 plus 50, there's already a crossing there, and when you're walking on the sidewalk, there isn't, there isn't a curb ramp, so you sort of, the sidewalk just dives right away. And so on the same page, there's a blow-up detail of that intersection. It just gives you an idea, that's the upper right of page one, gives you an idea what the curb ramps would look like. And it ends up, it ends up working out pretty nicely right there without changing too much. And then I continued the project, once you go across over in front of the coffee shop there, I show the sidewalk continues right around like it does right now. Some of the, some of the bigger changes besides the crosswalks and the alternate for having the sidewalk relocated are addressing some of the cross slopes. So we have several cross slopes out there on the site now that are very steep. Let's go, as you go up towards Church Street, for example, if you're in, it's so steep there, if you're in a wheelchair, the front tires want to move out from a 6%, 7% cross slope all the way up through there. And the retaining wall on the uphill side of that is very soft and almost nonexistent underneath it. So we can change the elevation of the sidewalk there pretty readily to change that cross slope. So sometimes we drop it down a little bit against the retaining wall, and at the time we pour the sidewalk to build, fill that little gap in. And then there are other locations where the sidewalk is relatively flat, like in front of Jim's Arcade, and when the sidewalk is flat, you can see it is sort of falling apart, because the water doesn't drain off the sidewalk. So in the instance that we need to tip it out a little bit, we try, we try first lower the curb, but there really isn't anywhere out there where we can lower the curb, because it's not particularly high as it stands. So there'd be a few locations where we're going to pick it up against the buildings. And it just, it just so happens that the couple places we need to do that, the buildings are soft buildings, that is, they're not, they're wood trim. So we'll give, we'll give the contractor a little detail, we'll notify the building owner, but we'll give the contractor detail for trimming that, siding, it's really trim, and then putting a piece of flashing on there so that we can bring the sidewalk up just a little bit. We have the little, you'll see little orange cross hatch areas at the ends of each of the sidewalks and at the curb ramps. Those are the detectable warnings, so that people know that they're about to cross, people who are visually impaired know they're about to cross the road. There's, there's, there are a couple of them out on your sidewalks, but this allows us to add them wherever we need them.
That's not an issue with snow removal or the snow plowing sidewalks?
No.
No?
They'll be, they'll be.
Unless they're not plastic.
As long as they're not plastic.
Yeah, these are.
Not a composite, they don't last.
They'll be iron. Yeah, they'll be plowable.
Looks to me like there's a lot of adjustment needs to be done before the pavement.
There's a lot of adjustment.
Yes.
Yeah. Just visually, if you see green, or you see orange, which is a lot of it, then it'd be a good time to do it. And the adjustment, some of the numbers that you see, we're not talking about a tremendous distance. At the most, we're talking about raising the sidewalk about three inches, that's at the upper end, and the same with the curb. The curb is getting raised in some places, as much as two tenths, so just a little over two inches. So it seems dramatic in the plan view, but it makes a big difference for the actual cross slope. Either we're flat, then we can get that grade, and if we're too steep, we can flatten it out a little bit. I didn't, I haven't graded in the sidewalk specifically for the alternate around the parking area, because I think that's something that we, you know, after you've had some time to look at the plans and think about it, decide what you want to do there. So we probably, with the final plan, it would be good to pick a sidewalk alignment, either replace where it is, behind the parking lot, or realign it where it'd be in front of all That's really, that's really a decision that would be helpful for me if you, if you could come up with any ideas about that.
Yeah, I think we really need to make a decision when we're in there, if we want to realign.
I wouldn't be in favor of changing the sidewalk to go out around, I think, cost-wise, and I just don't think people are so used to walking right across the front now, that we'd be almost throwing our money away to have it changed to go around that way, because they're not going to go that way, I don't think. I think it's not, it may look nice, but you know, we've never had a problem, as anybody, as you claim, there's, you know, cars backing out, never had a problem there, we never had a problem up at the Legion parking lot. And that's the same grade, I mean, the sidewalks right there, the side of the road. I think if you mark it out as to be a sidewalk, I think you're going to serve the same purpose.
It's not going to go back though, regardless. The concrete's not going to go back there, no matter what we do, it's going to be all asphalt, correct?
That, yeah, that would be.
Everyone has to have the same problem we got right now if we don't.
Yeah.
Down the road in a few short years.
So that's probably, that's probably the case, it's better not.
We'll put a, we'll put a, we'll delay any line like we do at the diner, and that's all it's going to be, but.
Is there anything that would preclude it being done five, 10 years from now?
No, not really.
By what, if we skip it, is it still something that can be done someday?
It is, it is, but all the, the curb ramps, now's the time to put them in. So even if we, even if we decided not to do it now, we'd still want to put the curb ramps in, so that you can have the crossings. Otherwise, you have to adjust that all later. So the benefit, the benefits are to changing that sidewalk. The benefits are that if you choose to mark that for handicap, there's one handicap parking space, but it's not, it's not done, it's not correct in that there isn't an accessible aisle next to it. If we move the sidewalk out front, then, or out front of the cars, then should you decide to repaint that with a handicap spot, or two van spots, then we can have, we can put the ramp out there for everybody to go to. Although I can't predict how often people get hit by cars, it is safer to have the sidewalk not on the traffic side, just like in front of all the buildings here. So it is safer, if you haven't had a problem, that's really, that's really good. But that's one benefit. And then, lastly, in terms of the crosswalks, right now, people come down those stairs or walking on the other side, the crosswalk just shoots right into the parking area, the aisle doesn't continue across. So you walk across that road, and you're still subject to the people backing up or pulling in, whatever.
I think it would make sense to move that crosswalk down.
Yeah.
At least. There's no need for.
Yeah, because I was going to just plan, there's three sides, three crossings marked out here on each, one on, one on each end of the parking lot, for the concept.
Yeah.
And then one crossing at the bottom of the stairs, which everybody uses.
Right, so the idea.
So I mean, it's like we're adding another crosswalk for, you know, just for fundamental of the crosswalk.
Well, if we would eliminate the one at the bottom of the stairs.
I had laid it out, you'll see, you'll see when you look at the drawings, I had laid it out, we do the existing one with the parking just as it is now, and we fix the access to that. That's really one option, is to have it right where it is. And then right next to that, I show the option where we delete that one and replace it with two separate. So we wouldn't, we wouldn't do three. We would do, would throw, take that one and get rid of it, and replace it with two.
And this one would stay regardless, going over to flatiron.
The one, yeah, the one with flatiron sticks.
It's adjusted slightly.
Is it, would it be a lot of money to put the sidewalk in front of the cars? Is it a lot more money?
It's a lot, it's a lot more money, yeah. Yeah, it's, in the budget figures that we talked about before, that's what we had, you know, that's what we had priced.
So that's included in what we talked about last week?
Yeah, the dollar figures include, you know, a sidewalk of a certain width and a certain distance, so that was part of the original budget, is to provide that. Sort of with sidewalk construction, it is true that the incidental things add up, but when you're talking about letting sidewalk, the incidentals aren't as expensive as you might think compared to, I mean, we're going to adjust, we're going to redo the curb, no matter what, on that parking lot, because the curb is, is in terrible shape. So we're going to redo the curb, and, but you would be saving that linear distance just in a one-to-one sort of savings by not, by not doing that.
Now, let me ask you, if I may, that sidewalk that you proposed to reroute in that parking area, is quite of an embankment down there. What are your provisions of any?
So, yeah, the, what I show is, I show pedestrian safety rail.
Okay.
Which is, which is, it's not a, not the four-inch-on-center sort of kid protection.
Right. Right.
It's a pedestrian alley. You'd see posts every 10 feet, and then two horizontal bars. So the 42 inches and another bar here. So it's not a handrail. It's not a guardrail. It's a pedestrian safety rail. So that if you're in a wheelchair, you couldn't go off.
But what if, you know, this is tending to be a walking community, and this would be an emphasis on that, this type of sidewalk rerouting, in my opinion, which you have a pretty good southerly view from there, but Mike, and I like that idea, because you've got a beautiful view down there, be able to take advantage of it all the way down, right down to Masukos and Athens. But if you have to have people who, with young children, I mean, what does that do for them with that type of safety rail?
It means that they can't, you wouldn't be able to fall off. I mean, that's what it's for. It's to provide that buffer so that people can't fall off. There is a fence there too that would keep you from falling, you know, off the retaining wall. But right directly next to the, on the sidewalk, we would have that pedestrian safety rail.
Do I try to know, you have something?
You also have this pedestrian rail marked in the default sidewalk plan. Is that just for some reason?
That was curving, wasn't it?
Dotted blue is the default handrail. Pedestrian safety...
No, that's just, that's just a relic. In this plan, if you leave the parking lot just how it is, that wouldn't be there. This is, it's just in this plan. So this is your two alternates.
I was just noticing you also had it listed as pedestrian rail.
Yep.
And the granite curb running between where the alley is, you have green. We put the curb there?
We put the curb, I mean, we tend to put the curb everywhere that we're going to run the sidewalk. And in the instance, something like that, I mean, occasionally...
We have the visually impaired markers, so wouldn't we be going down across, we were showing granite curving right there.
Yep. So the curb steps down. So if you, the way those, they're called parallel curb ramps, actually the curb dives down and then goes flat across. So the curb is continuous right through that whole section. It just gets ducked down flush with the pavement on one side and the...
That regulation. Is that ADA thing?
Well, it has to duck down because you have to drive over it.
The tip down, but you don't put the curving through the entranceway.
I would there...
See, that's what they did out in Safe Roots of School, it's just, they're plow catchers over time. Asphalt's going to settle.
Yeah.
The plow's going in there, it's going to catch it, it's going to get busted up. I do the tip downs to the truncated domes, and that's where I would stop.
Yeah. We can delete that. It's just, because it's not a road, I wouldn't be that concerned, but I'll go with you.
So it would be pavement?
Just like it is now. The entranceway. You still have it?
No, they replaced it. That's not pavement there.
It's concrete.
It's concrete.
Well, there's concrete through there.
Yeah, my sense is that, at most cases, you would want the sidewalk to be continuous.
Yeah, the sidewalk goes right across there. That's new.
That's what we do in...
And we'll clean it up. Right now, it's, there are about four concrete pores in that one spot, kind of patchy.
Right. But the question is whether or not the granite curbing would go through as well.
Right. So the granite curb goes through everywhere if we want to pull, you know, it goes through all those dips, all those ramps. If we want to pull it out there for plowing, then we certainly could.
All right, so I think it's a detail matter that we need to figure out. Yeah, I mean, I think the big decision we need to make is about this rerouting of the sidewalk. I like the, actually, this decision.
I don't know, my feeling is I don't think we can afford it.
Yeah, that's my thing. And that's something that's going to come if there's, if we delete it, if we do the plan, we can bid the project, and you'll have your choice. We're going to bid the job. These are different pieces, and for the pieces, just like that spreadsheet I gave you, we're going to say, just replace the sidewalk and adjust the curb, and then we're going to add, I don't want to say a premium, but we're going to add one to replace the subbase because we'd really like to do that if you can afford to do it. So at the time that you, if it's, if this looks like, if you see some merit to it, the engineering is going to be, there isn't going to be that much of a difference to take it from where it is now to finish it, then you can delete it. Because your fallback plan is to delete it and just paint the asphalt after it's been repaved, so...
Would it would make sense to put your, prepare for the next phase with the sidewalk portion?
With the blue crosswalk areas.
Yeah, if you could, if you could...
Well, not so much that, but the corner of where the sidewalk would return. We'd have to do something there. Wouldn't we have to do a...
Well, you'd have to do it anyway.
It'd be a six inch step down anyways or whatever, how many? From here, if we don't do this, if we do this for now, what's the transition going to be? Curving?
We would have to drop that curb.
Well, you'd have to do it anyway because people who park there are going to need to access that sidewalk.
You'd have to be a ramp.
From the parking lot, they have to access the sidewalk there too. So you would need that in any event.
If we, if you, if we decide...
We wouldn't move the crosswalk unless we moved the sidewalk, right?
I think we still move the sidewalk and crosswalk. I think it doesn't make much sense to have it go where...
People are creatures of habit. They walk down the stairs, and they're at the crosswalk, all day, every day. They go down the stairs, they're going to stand there looking for a crosswalk. If we don't put a crosswalk there...
You can't do it. By federal state, you can't do it. You can't leave that crosswalk. That's not a legal crosswalk.
Crosswalk can't go to an open area.
Isn't this a sidewalk?
So, the two new that you...
Now it is.
Yeah.
Wouldn't it be until we reroute it?
I still think we'd move it. I mean, I think it makes more sense to move it. I mean, you're going to...
You're both right. People actually have it.
People jaywalk any hand there.
That's right.
Sure, they're going to do it, but it's not safe.
No, it is. I think we move it to where it makes more sense to have it.
I was just saying, we continue to leave that sidewalk there, and something happens, we could be liable for it if we keep putting it back there, saying it's safe for you to walk across there when it's not.
It's a good time just to, on a bigger, on a big picture, I don't know, I didn't review the paving bid, and I don't know how exactly that's set up. When you do that sort of repaving of areas, that's really when you're supposed to hit all the ADA stuff. So that, this parking lot, for example, we show it just as reproducing it as is, but it really should, now that you're redoing it, it should be, have the actual van accessible parking areas.
You said this was, when you drew this up, it was with the existing or proposed budget that we had had there. I would encourage my fellow board members to do that. We've had, some of you have been here over the years, recently we've had some bumps in the road with some ADA issues, and I think this would be a good time to nip them in the butt, take care of them, and make it happen.
We can't afford to relocate the sidewalk.
No, sidewalk, we can...
It's budget, yeah.
Oh, I mean, the crosswalk.
Yeah, one question I have is, again, can you do either end and create these crosswalks without having to do the, that's what we're talking about.
Yeah, so that's right.
And there's, you know, money, if we get another grant, a pedestrian grant, say, we could do that another day.
Right, but he's right in that there will be, there's one little corner where we will sort of have to fix it one way or the other based on the bid. There's one little thing where we come in, right now, if you put the crossing there, you sort of come right into the grassy patch. We'll have to fix that.
We do or do not have money to reroute the sidewalk right now with the money we have for it?
I don't have the numbers in front of me, but I don't, I think we have to shave off some stuff off this, I don't think we should be going up past the Hula Cat. I don't think we can afford that now. I think what, my sense is the key is to get those things, get done right away, those things that...
Affect paving.
Are need, yes, need to get done before the paving.
The areas in red.
Yeah.
There are other places that we can hold off.
The curb all the way up through Hula Cat is fine elevation?
That's where it looks like. Off the sidewalk.
High five.
It's pretty close. It's pretty close, but I have not spent any energy on that yet, so I'm not, it looks pretty close, but I wasn't spending my effort on that section that we're probably not going to do. I will, I will, but just visually and from what I've seen, it looks pretty close, as we speak.
You mentioning raising sidewalks and spots, can you kind of give us an idea how you're going to do that? You're going to cut out the concrete that's there and then pour new, or are you going to raise what's there?
Yeah, the concrete that's there comes out. So all the sidewalks now, the plan is to redo them, so they come out, they'll, in the instance that they're, we don't know how thick they are.
You're more defining the curve is what it is, because I know when I drive up through there, there's spots where it's like this and like this. Is that, that's what you're trying to do, define the curve, correct?
Yeah, we're trying to make the, we shoot for seven inches. That's what we really want to have for the curb. But then the sidewalk, how we would do it is you go up against the building, you pull the old one out. We have our line right where it was. And then most of the time where we need to go up, we're against a wood-sided building, so they would cut the trim and put a piece of stainless flashing right up underneath there, and then so the sidewalk would make up that difference. But we do want to bring the subgrade up because concrete's expensive, so we don't want to spend, we don't want to just dump concrete in the hole. And long, old storefronts like this were likely to run into all sorts of surprises, but that's nothing new. Then if the sidewalk is dropped, then if you can imagine that the sidewalk would run right to the edge of the building, and then it would be thickened, so there'd be a little haunch that would fill that, fill that gap if the sidewalk is lowered against a structure. Mostly you can see it, when you walk up to Church Street, look at the retaining wall on your right-hand side, you'll see there's a big gap. It tapers, you know, it looks like this. And we'll run the sidewalk right up to that and then fill that, fill that gap in. They'll put a little edge board up and push some concrete under there.
I'm just thinking potential liability down the road if we go up against that, a soft, you know, the soft siding on a building like that, and something goes wrong, are they going to come back on us and say, yeah, well, a lot of snow and ice gets backed up there, and then they're going to say, well, you guys changed the sidewalk, I didn't have that before, so here we are.
You can answer that, you know, just as well as I can, but in the couple locations where we're talking about doing it, it's because the sidewalk is flat. So right now, we can show the water hitting the sidewalk and running in their building. If we tip, if we put the sidewalk up, at least we can get that water drain away from the building. But you're right, we're interfacing with private property, and this is my suggestion for how we tend to it, and get the owners and talk to those couple where we're going to raise it against the building. At least let them know if they have concerns, then we'll drop it right back to where it is, and they can, and the water can run in their building.
Okay, so I guess it looks, sounds like we want to hold off on relocating the sidewalk for now.
I don't think we can afford it.
We can't afford it.
But I think it's good to have it designed, since we're in the process, design it so that if someday we have additional funding, just as a separate project. We'd have an estimate of what that would cost to do it, so we can look at it and say, well, you know, if we cut this off, maybe we can work this in instead. I mean, I'm just looking at the overall cost of it and the effect. I mean, what are we going to get for the bank for the buck, basically? I mean, yeah, it's a safety issue, but I don't think it's that great a safety issue, but, you know.
So I think that's a good way to go then. If you like the idea of the two crosswalks, then I can sort of go in that direction. We'll do the whole plan, and we'll identify a couple stop points for the bid. We know we want to do the west side of the street, and then for the east side of the street, we'll go from up to the parking lot, and we'll do from the parking lot around to where it's asphalt, and then we'll do from asphalt up, and then you can just pick the contractor for what you want him to do.
I think too that if we push the ADA issue a little bit, we may be a little bit better positioned to get money to, you know, the elevator thing was a good point. In fact, we didn't know that was, we wouldn't get that money until somebody popped up with it and said, hey, you can get half of the cost of that, so, you know, I mean, we may, if we push the idea, we're trying to, you know, get this back into an ADA compliance, then...
That's neat.
We had to try and flex them back to buy.
We've been applying for funding for the stairs and trying to get that in, that's not an easy, I'm sorry.
Can I try?
I think if we, it could be bid in phases, and, you know, the first one being everything that has to be addressed before we can pave. And then if we have a two and a three, but we have to get everything, new curbing, new sidewalks, so we can pave.
Yep.
And if this isn't going to affect the new paving all that much, then we can do that when funding allows that.
Okay, so we need anything else? We need...
It sounds like what we need to do is, you can parse, you can cut up the project into biddable parts, much like we did with the other project, where, you know, we can go over that. But I think we just need to find a way to make it affordable, and if, you know, if we can get a price for that, can't we, to see what it is, then...
Yeah, we'll make bid documents and do it just like bid the paving.
Yeah.
With the one, two, three, four, five, six, seven.
So east side is, the curbing is fine of the village? East?
Some is, some isn't. Like flatiron?
And then further north? We don't really have that view, I'm assuming...
It's not, it's in...
That curbing is all fine?
Sorry, sorry, let me just turn, let me get on that page.
Like, correctly across the street, all that?
The only curbing, I'm all the way from the cafe, right from the coffee shop, all the way up to the parking lot, that's all been looked at, and that shows up here.
And then from the cafe north on the east side, in front of Popolo, that curbing?
I think it's done.
We didn't...
We're not looking, we're not, the sidewalk's in really pretty good shape.
Yeah.
But curbing for elevation? We're not going to move it if the sidewalks don't need to be replaced? Kind of seems high enough to blow off.
I think them sidewalks were done, they've been done, they've been done in the last 15 years. That whole side was done.
So we didn't shoot, we don't have any...
It's in pretty good shape over there.
It's in good shape. All right, anything else on this?
So we'll finish this up, and we'll get it out to bid as soon as we can.
All right.
Yeah, we won't come back to the board on it, but we'll report back on the 15th, or provide the bid documents that go out.
Okay, next is to review and accept highway traffic for this proposal.
Yeah, they're just progress, these are just progress prints that they can keep, right?
Yeah, you can have those.
And I have them digitally, so if you want, I can just email it to you as well.
Can I pull that? Just pulling it down.
Are you crazy?
Yeah.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you, coming in.
Thank you.
All right, so the truck.
I have a question.
Yeah?
Shane, your little thing that you did, you're saying existing fleet vehicle 2017, is that incorrect? It's on the backside of your agenda?
No, we're replacing it 2008.
Oh, comparing, okay, I'm sorry.
Yeah, comparing 2019 with a 2017.
My question would be on this retail order for a motor vehicle, year 2000... Year 2019 Freightliner and then right down below it says 2018. Is that just a misprint?
Uh, I mean, the vehicle's already made. It's made in 2018.
Yeah, it's a 2018. That's probably a misprint.
So the 2019 is a misprint.
It can't be exact, but it was, it's.
So it's, it's a misprint here too.
2018.
Vehicle. This is a 2018 note.
Yeah, well, often, I mean, every time I buy a vehicle, it says, I bought one in 2016. It was called a 2017.
Depends the month of the year that it's made.
Right.
Depends on the VIN number. See how it comes back as.
That's right.
It was kind of pointless, but it was on the same invoice, two different years.
Right. Well, the VIN, what would you say that the VIN?
Just put the VIN number through a computer and see how it comes back as, it'll come back as a Freightliner or whatever year.
Greg, and you can tell us. I'm sure that's what it is. The time year it was made.
Yeah. But, um, you know, the, the cost comparable, uh, between the two years is really, you know, very little difference in cost. Total three percent difference over a, a two-year period. And then also we have a, the trade-in is, is really pretty good at $28,000. It was, we, we were able to get them up a little bit on that also.
It's the first time we've ever got a trade-in. It's a good.
Did we ever find out anything on that repair that Peter?
Yeah, they're going to take care of half the cost of it. Even though the warranty was out and they can't prove it was their problem when it was ours, but they're going to, going to split the difference with us.
Good job, Peter.
Good catch, Pete.
All right. So there's, you're looking for us to approve.
Yeah, just the authorization to, uh, to accept the, the purchase and authorize the manager to execute any documents necessary for the purchase.
What is it that we're trading in?
2008 Freightliner, six little dumbs.
That's the one you just spent about 15 grand on right now.
Since it ran out of warranty, yes. Yeah.
And seven grand last, this past year.
Yeah. We had, we had put a new emission control exhaust system. It cost us $7,000. And, uh, I wasn't going to do it because I thought we were going to trade it before winter, but I needed it for winter. So we had to do it. I thought that's all stuff, that filter system, the, we had a spring break and ultimately broke the axle housing. That was a factory defect and the injectors were all factory, but it ran out of warranty. So they wouldn't cover it. The injectors were $5,000. That axle housing with the springs and hub bolts, that was another $5,000. That's just the big items. There's a lot of little items too.
Yeah, which is why you really have to stick to that.
Stay that, yeah, exactly. That five year, it really. I know, uh.
Prices.
Yeah. We're almost there. We're really close to being there. I mean, this truck should have went probably four years ago, but.
I know that Tano brought up the last time about the warranty difference, uh, between the five and seven year. What was the one out of 2008? Was that a seven year? Do you remember?
No, I think it was a five.
Was it five?
Yeah, it was a standard warranty. Yeah. We didn't get the extra at the time. I think these recent purchases, we've gone with the seven year. And, uh, if any of you follow any from all over the world, there's been quite an article all spring about municipal trucks and their municipal life. It's that wearing out after five years and they start costing you money.
So again, this is, uh, you know, we think it's a, a real strong proposal, uh, vehicle we're, we're used to, we like.
Right, yeah.
And it's a local contractor. So our recommendation is to go forward with it.
And so we have some money still in our, our equipment for, for this?
This was be borrow, we would be borrowing and because we had the other purchase of that other truck, we would have to borrow more. And we'll be coming back to the board in a, in a meeting or two, uh, with a proposal from, you know, well, we'll just go out for that. But what we had normally done is 15, we normally do for a hundred and sixty-five thousand dollar vehicle is 15 the first year, followed by three years of 50. Uh, the idea would be to keep it at 15 even for these two vehicles. And then we would have to adjust upward the, the subsequent years. Or we could, as an alternative, instead of borrowing 15,000, borrow 20, which we probably can deal with. And then adjust, uh, have a lesser adjustment for the, the out years. But, um, we'll, we'll be coming back to the board. So, you know, the next meeting, the one after on, on the borrowing, which we do need to do before the end of the year. But once again, with, with the, uh, you know, twenty-six thousand dollar, uh, trade-in, that helps out quite a bit. And then with the, um, the three other vehicle with the, um, uh, the claim that we got, it'll be in good shape. Won't be too bad.
How long's the basic warranty? Is that the same as the engine? The engine was five years?
Five years, same thing, yeah.
So they're both the same?
Yeah.
And Chairman, I move that we accept the highway proposal, uh, purchase proposal is presented and have the manager sign the appropriate paperwork. Second.
Any further discussion?
On there?
Hi.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Um, while you're here, question on sweeping of sand that are on some of the roads. Is that?
Next week.
Next week. Okay, good.
You got a new peron, right?
Yep. I was just waiting for the temperature to get above freezing, stay above freezing and.
But hopefully we're there.
Yeah. And we got two good days of, you know, warm weather and the phone ring off the hook when you're going to start spring cleaning. Well, we've been doing it since way before the last snowstorm. We just can't, can't get ahead of it right now. We will, we'll get it.
Yeah. Okay. And then the other, that back door truck, what's the status of that?
Yeah, that's not.
Yeah, I was looking at the grants today and, uh, yeah, we, we got to jump on that. But one of the issues is that they haven't even sent us the agreement yet.
Well, you know, it may not even happen now. They may cut the funding altogether. I just recently heard, but I don't know that for a fact. I don't know that.
They haven't been in contact with us. One of the issues that they were working with is the Buy America provisions.
Right.
Uh, with, all these vehicles have to have a certain proportion that are Buy American. I think any of them are, and so they're, they're working that through.
I hope that it does.
Yeah.
Yeah. I want to ask.
I'll, I'll follow up on that.
Follow up on that.
I've emailed the fellow in charge of the grant program and I just, he hasn't answered me back. So I don't, I don't know where we stand on it. I think it was a, might have been a competitor to the salesman that showed us, we demoed the truck that said that they were possibly doing away with all the funding. But I don't know that. We can't find out.
I'll, I'll contact V-Trans tomorrow.
Okay. Anything further while we got Mike in? All right. Thanks a lot.
Yeah, thank you.
Take care.
Okay. Finance office. Ron, how are you doing? Can't believe we're almost at the end of this year. Crazy.
Yeah, man. Okay. Pretty much going to just leave it to the questions you might have going through the, give you a quick recap on the general fund. Expenditures. We're at 88.6% of the budget. Means we have about 11% left to go for the next two months.
What percentage of the, of the year are we?
Uh, 10 and eight, we're about 81, 82%. Because it's approximately 8.3% each month. Now bear in mind that some of these expenses were one-time expenses.
Insurances.
Things like that. And, uh, that.
Debt payment.
Pikes up that percentage.
Is there anything that we're way over on that we need to be really concerned about?
One of the.
I blinded some stuff there. I can't.
I believe we're looking at the exact same report. So page four of the general fund. We're looking at, it, it's a split between various accounts within the finance office. Other professional services is $13,000. That is Nimerick. When Cynthia came in, but if you look at the finance director, that's down.
Right.
If we look at the finance staff, that's down considerably.
Yeah.
So we're only at 76% of the budget versus around 82% of time. And these numbers are through the, I think the 26th of April, when I ran the reports.
So on page four, postage, budgeted 7,200, spent 50250. We're only at 6.98%. Can you explain that?
Yeah. What happened this year? A lot of the postage was put, if you go three lines above to materials and supplies.
Yeah.
Lot of the postage was put into that account. So for what I'm going to do this month is see what, how much of postage is in that top account, supplies, and reclassify. So we have a proper comparison.
Ready for questions?
Yeah.
Page two of general fund.
Yeah.
Miscellaneous fees for solid waste. There's a huge increase in the miscellaneous. Do we know what that is? It went from 17, we had budgeted 17.5, ended up at 14, 48.4. Is there something?
That was, that was the payout we received last, late last summer from the solid waste district.
Oh, is that for the, the, uh?
It was like 39,000.
Compactor?
Well, we decided to, to get the compactor because of that.
Yeah.
But yeah, that, that was the, they dissolved one of the, the primary capital fund at the solid waste district and distributed to communities based upon usage. And so we got 43,000, I think?
Actually, we got a little less than 48,000.
Forty-eight.
Yeah. The bulk of that money right there of the 48 is attributable to the South West Windham Solid Waste Management District.
Does that have to be?
The district.
Does that have to be a different fund? I mean, does the auditor kind of frown about such a large amount in your miscellaneous account? When they, would they prefer?
Something like that. We'll normally ask them, where do we put this? And we'll bounce it off them.
There's no other place really.
You'd have to create another account.
Exactly.
Right.
But it's a one-time thing.
But it stands out like a sore thumb. So, and we got the backup to it. So if they say, no, we want it in this account, we do an audit entry to hold it. Now, the auditors are coming in next week for three days. So these are the type of things we can go over. Cause it'd be nice to have a clean, um, work, you know, trial balance for when they come in for real in, you know, after June 30th. Rather than be subject to all these different audit entries.
Right. Peter?
On page three, I asked you this last meeting, uh, the miscellaneous income.
Want to know what it is?
Yeah. Have you ever figured it out? I left, I left you alone. Let's try and find it.
Of course I did. Okay. The 74,000, I can give you 67,000.
I'll take that.
Okay. The rest is just a lot of minor stuff.
Yeah, I'll take this all in.
Okay. 31,300 was back taxes paid to the town for the Vermed building.
Okay. That makes sense.
Where they pulled out of town.
Yeah, makes sense.
And we can't post that to taxes or anything because it really wasn't, you know.
No, it's, it's an agreement.
Yeah. They, they broke the agreement.
Right. So, okay.
14,000 in that account is return of interest expense from US Bank on some of our loans or bonds. Actually, they.
That was my zone.
So. Also in that account, $12,000 worth of timber.
Oh, right.
And finally, uh, in there, we had a tax sale to Shaw for just slightly under 10 grand. So that makes up a little over 67,000.
Okay. Yeah, on page four.
Yeah.
Um, bank reconciling guidance. What is that?
Yeah.
Can you explain that to me? I mean, that?
Yes.
I've never seen this before.
Well, I'll compare it to years ago when I was, uh, doing public accounting. We had a bookkeeper that maintained the general ledger. She had an account called NTB. And there was pluses and minuses all during the quarter. And we asked her, what is that? She goes, it's needed to balance. So she was smart enough to put unidentified, you know, variances into one account. So we can clear. The bank reconciling items are adjustments to the bank, between the bank and the books. And which we're having a hard time trying to reconcile. So for purposes of moving forward, we put those items in there and subsequently we tried to track down what the true, uh, account should be. But we, we were way behind on our bank recs. Yeah, I think the last one reconciled was October. And, you know, we, I'm up working now on April. So, you know, we caught up. But yeah, we, we are going to investigate as best as we can. But you'll notice we did put it under the finance department. So didn't want to hit anybody else up for that.
Okay.
Page five.
Yeah.
Other professional services. What is that? There's 39, almost $4,000 there.
Okay. What line are we looking at?
Under professional services, it lists tax sale, town attorney, property appeals, and then there's other professional.
Professional service. Those would be, um.
That'd be Robin.
I don't know if it's Robin or if it's, uh, Nimerick.
I know that we, we hired, uh, Robin Street Apple to help us with the grant for the elevator. She put together the grant application and as an architect, she is able to help with the design aspects of it.
Is it, but back a page where it doesn't look like we're going to pay out on the website, support or training consulting? Is it safe to say that that funding, um, might've been moved, might've been used for that? Seventeen hundred dollars there that.
I'll need to, you know, pull up that account and see what's in there. And I'll report back the next, you know, two weeks, just so you'll know what is in that account.
Surprising to me that we didn't spend a dollar on the website.
I think website support is gov.com.
Gov Office.
Yeah, Gov Office, excuse me, is a company who we work with, who hosts our, our website. I think that's what that is.
Yeah, but we haven't spent any money in it.
Yeah, I know. So what's a good question is.
Okay. Further down the page, the last line, uh, page five, 39, 69440, tax sale acquired properties. I, I get what that is, but.
I can give you the breakdown.
No, I'm not worried about that. I know what it is. Uh, but the Green Street property that was just sold, that probably is not going to be posted for another month or something.
It'll be posted this month.
And that, that'll offset some of that. Yeah, okay.
Yeah, we, uh.
I just figured that.
Where we cut off the month, like four or five days early on this report, we just didn't have time to.
I know that there was a provision and then we have to wait 30 days in case somebody.
Yeah, we only, we only, we got a thousand dollar check on that. Then the balance 10,000, we have to wait 60 days.
Right, right. Yeah, I knew that. Okay. I took your check. Page nine, I'm looking at debt service because you're 99.89%. Are we done with payments or we got more coming?
Well, if you, if you look at budget versus, uh, actual, we're pretty much done.
That's why I was just wondering. I mean, 98%, if you call it 100%, I was just.
Excuse me.
Question.
I think there's one more interest payment, May 15th and, you know, for the year. And, uh, most of the payments we have are either May 1st, November 1st. Most of the payments we have are either May first, November first, or, I think, December and June, you know, so, you know, we're pretty much done with, with this.
Highway fund, next one, then I'm done, I think.
You want the highway fund?
Yeah, page sixteen, last page.
Okay, I gotta get to that. Okay, highway.
Top of the page, second line, building maintenance repaired, what, what constitutes that, twenty-six thousand?
Okay.
I just think of what we've...
A new well.
There's a new well for sixteen.
That was mentioned last time, I was just...
Yeah. And there's also forty-five hundred for mechanic bay lights.
Yeah, okay.
All right, any other questions?
I have a question on meeting house on page six, meeting house materials and supplies. That's a big, big...
Is that under the general fund?
I think that was that one that they published, didn't it?
Page six, meeting house...
A lot of money for a guest book.
That was a book for people to purchase.
It's the one-ten-ten-thirty-seven-twenty-twenty.
Okay, the dollar amount, you're looking at two thousand?
Yes.
Okay, I will again have that answered.
Yeah, if I remember right, it's, they publish some of those guide, those books that talk about, and then they sell them.
Yeah, that wasn't that much, though.
Because materials and supplies would be basically that. It has nothing to do usually with repairs or stuff of that nature.
Okay.
I just have a question.
I mean, that same, same area, meeting house maintenance and utilities is up, but I suppose, yeah, budgeted two thousand, we actually expended to date three thousand four hundred and seventy-one.
That, that is, there was some maintenance work that was done. Some of it was grant funded, and then we had to kick in a portion where it was like, we got five hundred dollar grants, and we had to do a little bit extra on it, but we'll find out.
Yeah.
Did we, yeah, you checked on the recycling one, right?
Yeah.
All right, so that's all set.
We're all set on that. I'm all set, all right.
Okay, the only other question I have is with the town clerk's office, and she's got the rabies, which I can understand, but then, oh, I gotta go find it. I'm on page one, okay?
You're looking into revenue.
I am.
One of thirty...
No, payables, it says payables. State rabies, two hundred and thirty-nine dollars, I can understand that, but state staying, one thousand one fifty-five?
She's on the balance sheet.
Yeah, it's on the balance sheet.
Oh, it's on the balance sheet.
Yeah, page one, yeah.
I don't understand why it's so much more. It's a dollar, a dog license to the state for the rabies, and I, it's either two or three to the state for the spay neuter fee. So, why is it so out of whack? I guess that's a question for Kathleen.
Is there, is the veterinarian's fee in there for doing that?
No.
I'd have to look, look at that account.
Okay.
Okay, so...
Because that's definitely out of whack.
Okay, so the two accounts.
I'm not finding that, what...
Yeah, I'm not finding any.
On the balance sheet, the very front sheet change.
Yeah.
Look on, down the other bottom, payables, liability payables.
Okay, found in that area.
Rabies, and then spaying.
Spaying, yeah. Eleven.
No, that's, you're saying that's a lot more than we expect.
Yeah.
It's a nice problem to have, I guess.
Yeah, I guess, Gaitan, you had something?
Yes, just back to the well thing again, it's now up to sixteen thousand dollars, you said?
It's fifteen thousand, eight fifty-three.
I thought we had approved ten originally, right? And it came back at twelve.
I don't think, it was nothing different than what was reported in the past.
I don't remember.
I don't know if they had issues.
Well, yeah, and that's why it was higher than we had...
Right, but it was only up, it was higher by a couple of grams.
I don't remember the, I don't remember the total, but...
If you'd like, we can pull, pull off the...
I'll stop and...
Okay, anything else on highway or...
Yeah, if you could just put on the well, if you related to that, just pull, let's start.
And there's no plan at this point for a tax sale, that would be something in the fall, most likely?
I've been talking to Ray a bit about that, and one of the thoughts, he recommends is we wait until after the May, you know, things that go, don't link with then, and then, then just jump right into it. So, it would be a sep, I guess, a September sale, like it was done two years ago. We could go forward now, but it wouldn't make sense.
It didn't make sense before now, but I just, just to get an idea of...
Right, but he's given us, he's given us the chart that he needs and the format that he needs to, to move forward on all that.
All right, anything else on the budget?
We are starting to do projections now, so to make sure that we're, we're in good shape at the end of the year. So, we're, you know, going to start projecting out, you know, payroll and benefits, and look at whatever else has not been spent, and put a hold on what we need to put a hold on, and just make sure we're on budget.
Yeah, the department heads have been active in coming into the office and asking for, you know, year-to-date numbers, and, you know, if there's a question on invoice, so, you know, they're actively looking towards June thirtieth.
Okay. Anything else? All right, moving on to select board items. Kids to Park Day proclamation.
Okay.
Thank you very much.
Thanks.
Thank you, people. Select persons.
Have a good night.
Yeah.
Okay, so this is a, this prop, this is something that came in earlier this week as banker, late last week.
Yeah, it just seems like a worthy, worthy clause that, and I spoke to Ryan Studley, and he's going to, you know, create some events surrounding this. And it's, again, Kids to, Kids to Parks Day, May nineteenth.
All right, so I'll read it. Whereas, May nineteenth, twenty eighteen, is the eighth Kids to Parks, Parks Day, organized and launched by the National Park Trust, held annually on the third Saturday of May. And whereas, Kids to Parks Day empowers kids and encourages families to get outdoors and visit America's parks, and whereas, it is important to introduce a new generation to our nation's parks, and whereas, we should encourage children to lead a more active lifestyle to combat the issues of childhood obesity, diabetes, melitus, hypertension, and hypercholesterolemia. Oh, my goodness. And whereas, high cholesterol. Whereas, Kids to Parks Day is open to all children and adults across the country to encourage a large and diverse group of participants, and whereas, Kids to Parks Day will broaden children's appreciation for nature and outdoors, and now, now therefore, the select board of the Town of Rockingham do hereby complain, proclaim to participate in Kids to Parks Day. We urge residents of Rockingham to make time, May nineteenth, twenty eighteen, to take the children in their lives to a neighborhood, state, or national park, dated first day of May, twenty eighteen, by the Rockingham Select Board.
And Chair, move to approve the Kids to Parks Day proclamation, and the board sign.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Hi.
Coming at us.
Okay, manager search committee update. The committee met, well, we got applications in as of, well, they were due on the sixteenth, and we got twenty-seven applicants. We reviewed them last week, and we have ten that we will start reviewing this week, starting Thursday. And we would like to, ideally, we'll, we'll get all of them, I should know the schedule tomorrow, that we can make sure we can get them all in, and have a joint board meeting on May eighth, before the trustees meeting, so that we can give the report of the interviews and recommend a shortlist for the boards, and then discuss how the best way is to do the second round of interviews with the, with the two boards. I don't know if my thirty works for people, if we can do that on the eighth. I don't know if it's going to take more than a half hour. I'm hoping we can give a quick report and move on to hear, because you have a meeting at six, right?
Right, yeah.
Does that work for people, to come at five? Is five too early for people? I mean, to give us more time, or...
So, May eighth, that's a Tuesday, right?
It is.
Yep, I should be available. So, May eighth at five P.M.
Does five work, is, for people? Maybe we should give ourselves a little extra time, because we'll see, the trustees will have to let us know if that's good enough, enough time for most of them. I think most people can make five, though, right? Except for, you might be...
Or should be able to.
You should make it, yeah, I mean, might run in a few minutes late, but...
It depends on his schedule.
Who's this?
Smiles at the store.
Yeah, he might, he probably can work around it. He's been good about being able to work around it. Yeah. Okay, so then we'll have a joint, call for joint meeting on May eighth. Anybody have any questions? All right. I think we had some good applicants, so...
You shooting the five?
Five. Yeah, I think that'd be better. Okay, review overtime and comp time report. We got out of our last storm, it's okay. Any issues, anyone? Questions? Nope, it's not, all right. Review task list. Let's see. A lot of these, I think, again, we really have no, much, the Vilas Bridge, we have the letter, nothing further has happened on that, right? Has anything been scheduled? We were talking about a joint...
I'm not aware of anything happening at, at that level. I did hear from somebody that there was some inspection going on this past week.
There was.
Yeah, I saw them over there on the, on the Walpole side, they were over there, somebody, I don't know what they were doing, but...
Well, they had the, a lot of stuff for a few days, they had the truck that went down, and they were all looking at it. They just did that with a drone, I don't know.
Oh, is that right?
Well, I think they're talking about, you know, surfacing it a little bit, just to, to prevent further damage, maybe allow pedestrians, I don't know, but...
I don't know if it would affect...
But, you know, there was, I've been trying to contact, I think you have as well, there's the, the agency in, down in Washington, D.C.
Right, historical preservation.
Yeah, I did find it, you know, they, they had sent a letter to Federal Highways a couple of years ago, and never got a response. I've been pushing for them to try to get a response, and the, I just got a response back from them saying, basically, you're on your own, we're not going to go any, do any further. I'll share that with you, because I know you've been involved somewhat.
Yeah, that's unfortunate, yeah.
Yeah, I think, you know, I don't know why, but there's been a, a change in their approach. They were advocates for historic preservation, and it seems like that it's not the case anymore. They told us to pound sand, basically.
Depot, Depot Street Bridge, we had that meeting, we updated the board on that meeting we had.
I thought we did, but there was a meeting with V-Trans and a bunch of folks from V-Trans to begin the scoping process. We did talk about different alternatives, one of which was to reroute the bridge, actually to have one parallel to the, the existing rail trestle bridge, with the possibility of keeping the existing bridge as a pedestrian bridge. A lot of different alternatives that they're looking into. I had offered to make contact with Great River Hydro on behalf of the state, and to find out who would be the contact for them, so I, in fact, two days ago, sent them a list of all the different contacts at Great River Hydro. One of the thoughts was whether or not the canal would be able to run dry for a little while, in order for us to get the project done quicker. Every, every drop of water is worth, worth something, so that's, you know, the idea would be, you know, if they needed to do any, any maintenance work, it would be a good time to, for both parties to do that, so I, I don't think that's necessarily realistic, but it's...
Worth finding out.
You never know, you know, if you don't ask, you never get. So, that's still working, that project is.
Okay. The theater committee formed, they've been meeting every couple of weeks. At this point, the committee is just getting, gathering information. They're not, at this point, making any recommendations, but gathering information about how the theater operates, and putting out letters to people who rented the theater before, to get their feedback of how that rental process went, were they happy, where things could be changed, and so forth. Pretty much, that's...
Yeah, this is certainly, we just put a survey out.
Yeah, that's right.
Went to BIFTA and GFRCC.
That's right.
Which they have distributed, they said, to their members, see if I can get any business feedback from the greater area.
Right.
Also, we're looking at doing, getting some additional assistance from the high school about getting some, the survey stuff done outside, in front of, this is a great week to do it, with Avengers, it's quite, you know, a lot of people coming to see that.
To see where people are coming from.
See where people are coming from, still trying to get that information as easily as possible, yeah.
And people come from places I wouldn't expect.
Where can you go see the Avengers for five bucks?
Yeah, right. Okay, I think that's...
Where can you see any movie for five bucks?
Five dollars.
Quality of life issues, that's on here, we've never really even discussed what that means. At one, some point, we won't do it right now, but at some point, we probably need to have a discussion of what that means, but, Bridge Street Bridge, you know, nothing new, maybe not.
There was a committee, Transportation Committee meeting at Wyndham Regional, Chuck went on our behalf, and, you know, he's still trying to push that along, but, you know, it's, it's, we're going to keep it, you know, keep it in their, in their, on their lists as best, best we can.
Devin, do you got anything from Wyndham Regional yet?
I got, I got the paperwork to return to them, but I was so sick at their last meeting, I couldn't go.
Okay, no, I was just going to say, because I know it takes, there's always a delay when you appoint a new person, we can't jump on to the committees, but...
Depp, did you go to that meeting?
No, I was, no, I was going to go with Chuck, but I was too sick, I was afraid I'd just, like, make everybody else sick too. Animal control, I did get the paperwork from Ann that she had been working on before about the new animal control ordinance. I know that there was a dog picked up on Darby Hill that, over the weekend, that was hit by, no, that was two, the dog was picked up by Darby Hill, and then there was another dog hit in Saxon River, that there was some confusion about where that dog, those dogs should go. I think the one in, one went to Springfield, I don't know, I don't know what the situation was, but because we don't really have it, we've got it. So, I will, I guess, start looking at that, and we've got to finalize our animal ordinance and figure out what the proper procedure is when those kind of horrible things happen.
Right.
All right. Revolving loan fund, collection billing by April first, well, now July first, on loans going forward. You had a committee?
We're meeting Thursday to discuss that and a couple of other things, so, if I'm in the committee, we can probably give you something.
Okay.
To where that's going.
Town Hall Route, we just discussed that, and we're...
Yeah, we're good on that.
Good on that.
You know, until we get a breezy, you know, a windstorm with rain, we'll, we'll see how it goes, but they were very confident that it, the work that they did was stabilizing.
And the traffic committee, we finalized it.
Who was appointed from the village to replace that?
I don't know. Nobody, yeah. They're going to wait till after the election.
Oh, that's right.
No, I was just talking about getting a meeting going on there before...
Yeah.
Actually, Kelly Tully came in today to ask.
People have been asking as well.
About it, and I told you that I thought you were probably waiting until after the trustees had appointed somebody else.
The sign that's up at the Park Bridge, it says, truck traffic to Route five north, since south's not mentioned on that. The only reason I asked the other day, two trail trucks peeled off and went right to the square. So, if you're trying to stop traffic from going there, you might want to look at that sign.
The new sign?
The one that's on right there by the... I know BDR's been going around and going around cumbeys and stuff. I know BDR's been going around and going around cumbeys and stuff, they've been doing that, but some of them come through the square, but there was a Schneider truck was, came across the bridge and promptly went left, right down through.
Is it a new sign there that?
That's one of the guys put up, it's one of those traffic signs, Route 5, truck, Route 5.
It shouldn't say north, it should just say Route 5.
I think it just says north, but I don't know, maybe it doesn't. I didn't get a good look on it, but.
I'll drive by and then I'll head home.
So, then the committee will wait until after, after the election, which is.
Know which meeting, find out who we are.
14, 15.
Yeah, the 15th, so that would mean our next meeting wouldn't be until the following Tuesday.
Following Tuesday.
Okay.
The 22nd?
22nd. Onto various tasks. Road inventory, we're done with that, though. What about the gravel roads? Do you know the schedule for that?
I don't know right now.
We got the side, oh, not sidewalk condition map, where that would be waiting, I guess, till highway crew have time? Isn't that highway crew who normally, I think Pepper actually did it?
The sidewalk condition map?
Yeah, wasn't that Pepper, too? Someone from the town crew used to go and do it, but I don't know who.
I thought it was Everett.
Used to be Everett.
Yeah.
That's the last one we have.
Yeah. So, that's something that's, again, I suppose, maybe wait until we get a Public Works Director at that point, but.
Right.
Culvert Maintenance, ongoing, I guess, nothing new there. Backyard Truck, we just got the update on that. Higher property maintenance, we're in the works, and Public Works, we're in the works for that. Island Development, continue working with BFADC on redevelopment of Robinson Paper Mill.
The other week, we, a bunch of us, Gary Fox and some BDCC members and the Planning Commission, or DRB Board, excuse me, had an interesting fun tour through that building.
It's a nice.
Sort of revealed them a lot of stories that went on in that building when I used to work down there. It's moving along, the project's coming along, but they needed to get that through for the DRB, so just wait till they have a hearing on it and go from there.
Has that been scheduled here?
I don't know.
I have a question about the backyard truck. How much did we approve for that thing? Should it not without 75?
I think so.
Yeah, total price was 325.
It was 75.
Are they just 325?
No, I know, but the we, the grant, it was a grant, the we had to put in, I think, was 75.
That should be right.
The grant was 225.
Right.
So, yeah, if we don't get that grant.
Don't get the truck, right?
Don't get the truck. We have that 75 in this coming year's budget, correct?
And we could borrow less money. No, we have to do it this year.
Yeah. Traffic Committee, got that. Again, this townwide policing, I haven't heard an update at all, I don't know if anyone else about where that went in the legislation.
Dead on arrival, I think.
Dead on arrival, okay. Don't have to worry about that.
Can we take it off there, or not?
Until next year, probably, when they bring it around again.
Yeah. Well, I mean, at some point, we might want to have, have a discussion, maybe at the joint board, again. I thought it was interesting, I don't know if anyone else looked at the VPR report on traffic tickets in Vermont towns.
These are right up top, yeah.
And some of them were, some of these towns, there's three towns where 25% of the, they fund.
They're income.
They're income through that. But Rockham and Bell's Falls was very, like, $1,000.
Very low.
And 1,500 or 1,700, I forget the numbers, but very, very low, meaning we're not ticketing in this town, I guess.
Or they're obeying the speed limits.
No, it's not happening.
Yeah, that's like.
I could, I could make a fortune just on my road alone in the morning.
Make a fortune right out here.
Well, I know the speeding ticket payments came through the other day, and it was just big. I mean, it was, we had quite a few payments just the other day in finance.
But anyway, I mean, we've never had this, it's a constant, constant complaint about people, not just text, speeding, but texting now.
Oh, yeah.
I mean, it's incredible, and maybe at some point, when we have a joint board meeting, we need to talk about, you know.
You see them every day, you stand on the corner, and you can watch them go by with that thing right there.
Yeah.
They're right at it.
Yeah.
And they probably got to hook up Bluetooth in their car, they just damn figured out how to put it on.
Yeah, probably.
What were the big three towns, do you know? Mount Holly?
No, it was 2 on 100, it was, I can't remember. But anyways, you can go to VPR and you can look.
Wilmian or.
There was an article about Mount Holly somewhere.
No, it wasn't those, they were up north, I mean, they were along Route 100, up to Ridgewater, but somewhere like that, and.
Yeah, I read the article, I can't remember the street towns.
A lot of them, you know, people were.
Proctorville.
No.
No?
Not even Chester, where you're constantly seeing police.
I've gotten a ticket here.
They were like 50.
They stop anybody that gives them a dirty buck, they'll stop you right there.
So, anyway, maybe, well, we're not there yet, so, I'll. Signage, that's animal control, okay. Tax sale, town-owned property, disposal property, and we've had that discussion tonight. 10, 10 and a half church, what's happening with that?
I want to report on that, the, we are eligible for $108,000 grant, loan, excuse me, interest-free loan, with, it's no longer going to be the Southwest Windsor Regional Commission, it's a retail commission up north, but again, interest-free, up to 10 years, which is, you know, and there's a little bit of paperwork we need to do, but we still have a lot of work to do on this. We have to, you know, we have to go out to bid, we have, in order to do that, we have to get consultants who can bring us through the, you know, the remediation process. So, Chuck was on vacation last week, so he's back now, and he'll be working on that project.
Yeah, I mean, school vacation's coming up shortly, and we really need to get it done throughout the school vacation break, so.
Oh, yeah.
All right.
I'd like to get it, try to get it done this fiscal year, if possible.
Blighted Buildings, Consider Ordinance, Peter, to meet with Springfield.
Yeah, I'm going to start working on that this week. I have downloaded two of them, one from Rutland, one from Springfield. I just finished researching around with that one, because they quote state statute in there, what they have authority to pursue, so now that I've got that under the belt, I'll start coming up with a draft one and go from there. Just got a couple of questions for Springfield or Rutland, to find out how they handle bankruptcies as far as the vacant buildings, so just see what they run into, curiosity's sake.
FYI, the trustees at their last meeting voted to proceed with Dangerous Building Declaration on Ilkemco Building. So, they're moving, so the fire chief's working on that now, and they'll be discussing it at their next meeting.
But isn't that just to board it up?
Yeah.
Yeah, it's to secure it. I mean, it's, tearing that thing down would be a lot of work, but the key is to, is to secure the building. It's an attractive nuisance.
All right. Maximize Town Resources for Town-owned Buildings, Meeting House, Opera House, Waypoint, Center, Rex Center, and so forth. At one point, we talked about having a meeting with the Meeting House Committee, or the Meeting House, Friends of the Meeting House, just to get it, we, when Doreen raised that issue of, you know, money. And they do raise money, and we don't really have a sense of what happens with any of that, so at one of the upcoming, well, actually, we, didn't we also say we were going to reschedule the Meeting House meeting, or?
June.
June?
Yeah.
When it's really hot, yeah.
Before it's really hot.
Well, we actually need before.
You get maximum sunlight, so, second meeting in June.
We don't have a second meeting in June.
What's that?
Sometimes you don't have a second meeting in June. Because it goes June, July, August, with only one meeting a month.
Well, if it's, if there's a second meeting in June, that would be the lightest, you know, close to the lightest days of the year.
Or, I mean, it doesn't have to be the lightest day in the year, it's just September where.
You said the first meeting in June.
First meeting in June, I think we said, which is coming up.
Yeah.
So, yeah, then they should make sure that they, someone is there who can give us a good report from that.
So, should you invite them?
Yes.
As a member of the Meeting House Association, we typically only have two meetings a year. One of them is a director's meeting, and the other one is the annual meeting. That one's usually done when it's really hot, before Old Home Day. And so, as far as funding goes, we only find out once a year how much money has been raised, and how it's been done, or new ways to raise money, so it would be, who view and the association itself to get, you know, to do more, whoever you, to raise funds.
Is John Luffin still there?
Yes, John Luffin.
And then I had a conversation with Doreen Studley about, again, about her wish to have the Waypoint communities meet, and I think I ended volunteering myself for that, because nobody else volunteered. And I'm going to be seeing her tomorrow morning again, because she also raised the issue of how difficult it is to get volunteers, and she would like, it would be great if it could be done like the Meeting House is, with a stipend for docents, but I don't know what's in the budget, if there's even anything in the budget.
Nothing.
For such a thing. But something maybe for the future, we have to think about when we.
One thing, when you're talking to Doreen, you might want to mention, Ellen caught it the other day, when she was down there with the tree people, they don't have any hours of operations, and I'm saying, nobody knows when they're open or closed, or anything down there.
On the door?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Because you're going to have to contact them to have at least the outside bathrooms done when the kids come down from, for free, from Springfield Tech to trim those trees in the back down there.
Next, but board to be notified of all, budget, this is the budget, board to be notified of all change orders prior to application, I think that's been happening pretty regularly. We haven't had many.
Haven't had one since we implemented that.
And Bynum's Bridge on air again, duplicates.
They're working on it. Maybe we see something.
Okay, items for the next meeting, May 15.
The paving bids.
Yeah.
And also, we'll.
Sidewalk, will we have the sidewalk?
We'll report on the sidewalk, and we won't, we haven't gone out to bid yet.
Which, yeah, I mean, we're getting nervous about getting those done before paving. Anything else? Going to make it?
Well, might, might we have some bid packets to approve that day, you think?
The paving.
Like, for sidewalks?
I think we're going to try to get that done, get it out before, before the meeting.
What, the sidewalk?
Sidewalk bids, we'd like to get them out next week. I thought we weren't going to wait for another board meeting to pull them out.
Right, 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 yeah, no, so, but, I mean, we would, can make a decision on sidewalk bids on that May 15th as well.
No, I don't, it won't have enough turnaround, I don't think. If we put it, you know, we're not going to get it out to bid tomorrow, it'll probably, I would hope for early next week, you know, unless he can patch something together by Friday.
So, we may have to have a special meeting just for the bids.
Once they come in, potentially.
Okay. Otherwise, May 20, and May 29th might be too late, joint board.
Well, we'll see, we'll do the best we can.
Anything else for the May 15th? Can't think of anything else, dropped my head on. Joint Board meeting, May 29th. At that point, we should have more information about the Manager's Search. Hopefully, we'll have some good news by May 29th. Okay, we'll let Carrie know when anything comes up. Review and approval orders, bills and warrants.
Move to approve of some questions. One, actually. On the 419 one, page one, top of the page, the manager's laptop and the C.O.G. laptop within clients, we approved that at the previous board meeting, and it was found that they paid it again. When I signed the warrants last Monday, when you asked me, because you weren't going to be here, I caught it, Brenda pulled the invoice and said, "Yep, I guess we did pay it twice, but the tech never went out, so we paid the money."
And it's printed again on page two, manager's laptop, 60249. Is that?
Same thing. That's what I said, they got paid.
It's a different budget line, that's, that's the allocation to the village there.
Oh.
It's a 515 account.
Oh, I wondered why it was so much cheaper than.
Yeah, it's 515, so they, yeah.
Yeah, so it's allocated between town and village.
The $3,800, the $2,800 got pulled. Shane, I'll ask you, on page, the second one, 42518, page one, almost down to the bottom of the thing. Greater Rock Fitness, we pay membership for guys to go to that?
Yeah, it's part of the agreement.
I don't know, I haven't been off the board, I've been off the board for years, so I'm just trying to figure out what that's about.
It's a payroll deduction thing. They, they pay it, they bill us, but it comes out of their paycheck.
Yeah, they get a reduced rate. That's why I just happened to see it and saw the name.
We don't actually pay it, pay it. Oh, so that's not the union ones? Which we do, is part of the union contract for fire, I think.
But they get a discount, right, by doing it?
They get a discount for doing it through payroll deduction, so, but, no, it's not paid for by the town at all.
No, I just, I just stuck out there. We flipped the page over on page two, there's a Sandry Tax Credit Refund for $1,359. Anybody know why we gave them a refund? Did the prices get lowered or something? I know, I'm assuming it's the gas station on the south end of town that you're not, that's closed up now. I don't know the answer to that.
I saw that, too.
Yeah, about 3/3 of the way down the page, it'll say Sandry.
Tax credit.
Tax credit refund.
Overpayment? I don't know.
I haven't heard that their appraisal got changed, but maybe it did. I don't know why else we'd begin a credit refund on that.
All right, anything else on those?
Yeah, page three, and then I'll stop, I think I'm done. There's three bills for Discount Oil. I thought we had a contract with H&amp;B that we were buying at a contracted price in H&amp;B, I wondered why we bought three.